All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of September 15th, 2014 to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state where it stands, two beautiful peninsulas united by a bridge of steel, where equal opportunity and justice to all is our ideal.
Marcus, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama.
Here.
Councilmember Shipper.
Here.
Councilmember Spelman.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Filkins.
Here.
We're all here.
We are all here. Okay, this time, we need an approval of the agenda, but we do have, in addition to the agenda, if I'm correct, Marcus, under Community Spotlight?
That is correct. There is a request this evening to add the Michiganska World Tour to our Community Spotlight. I suggest we add it as Item B.
All right, could we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the amendment of, under Community Spotlight, Letter B, presentation of Michiganska World Tour.
Marcus, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Shipper's.
Yes.
Councilmember Spelman.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Melama.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment. If you would, please limit your comments to three minutes, and if you would, state your name and address for the record. We would appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Mike Filkins. I reside at 327 Granite Street in Cadillac, and I wanted to say this evening, because there is an agenda item regarding the arts in our community, that I know that the city of Cadillac has caused a lot of the arts and culture through its specific action over 100 years, and as we look to the future, and possibly the revitalization of the downtown, as I've been looking at the business innovation plan that was written about a year ago, and noticed that they need space, the arts need a space perhaps for an art center to get started, and perhaps there can be some joining of those two efforts, especially when people are looking at the possibility of the city having to consider reacquiring the Cobb's Mitchell Building. That might be a great place to start. So I just wanted to throw that out, that there are people that might not always think of a collaboration between business and the arts, but I think possibly there's a wonderful opportunity in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment, and at this time, we need to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on September 2nd, as well as the closed session held on September 2nd.
I do have a concern on Melama, so should I bring that up?
Yeah. All right.
Yes, concerning the minutes of the last meeting, I feel that there are some areas that are missing. One, and I should have brought my notes, but I did not, I think one is the discussion on the issues and ideas over coffee. I think that several of my comments are missing. Mr. Stevens' comments and councilperson Shipper's comment are missing, and I think those should be added. I think when people listen to the tape and listen to the broadcast, and then we approve the minutes, I think that they need to be very similar. There shouldn't be as much discrepancy. The other thing is, is that in the closing statement, Mr. Stevens' comments are not there either, and I think he made some very valid points, along with the mayor's statement, and I realize that that's hers and hers alone, and I think probably Mr. Stevens' comments were his and his alone too, but for a balance, I think that those should be included too. I regret that I didn't let Mr. Petcha know earlier, but I was tied up doing some things, and then I quickly were scanning my agenda over, and I noticed those discrepancies. I don't know if this is proper or improper, I guess, but I'll ask. Maybe the best way to do it would be to, if it's possible, to table the minutes from the last meeting and review the tape, and then we could approve them at the next meeting to save time.
I actually don't believe we can do that. Mike, the city attorney, would need to align on that. He could probably do that just this evening. We could add, we could amend the minutes tonight to include whatever council would like to include as a part of them, and approve them as amended, but Mike, can you advise me to table the minutes? I'm not sure if you could.
The minutes, if they're going to be corrected, have to be corrected at the meeting immediately following the meeting at which the minutes were taken. So because we're talking about the last meeting, they would have to be corrected at this meeting. Otherwise, they could be adopted at a future meeting, but not changed or corrected.
So you can add, if you want us to add anything, or if anybody would like us to add anything or amend the minutes, certainly we can do that tonight. We don't necessarily need to.
Well, I should have. I don't know if Mr. Stevens has his notes, but I certainly don't have mine.
I had a couple different, I did pass those on to Mr. Petcha today, but.
Verbally.
Verbally correct, yes. On a different, on different ways, but.
What would you like added?
Well, I can, one is the reason why I went to the issues and ideas over coffee. It had to do with statements made in political campaigns that I objected to, and I know staff objected to, and that was the reason for taking that on. Second thing is, is that I have always never had denied any councilperson to attend any of those sessions. In fact, Mr. Stevens has attended, I think, three or four, and when I was gone one time, when I couldn't make it, and in fact, he even covered for me. The former mayor had made appearance before, so I think those are important. And the other thing is, is that anyone is welcome to attend. I want to make that very clear. I don't think anybody needs a special invitation, so I want to make that one very clear. The other thing is, is that I think it provides a very valuable service to the staff, and we keep on tweaking it. The staff is not required to be there. I do appreciate that they're there very, very much, and I will continue. I think it's a very, very valuable service, and I think that pretty much. Mr. Stevens, I don't know if you had some comments or whatever.
Initially, I had talked to Mr. Petcha about adding councilmembers Shipper's. I was concerned on this topic that it gave a different, of what we actually kind of gathered of what took place, that this kind of gave a different picture. I think we had consensus to just kind of leave it as it was, and that wasn't portrayed reading through this.
I think that where we left it was, we needed to move on in the agenda, so what I asked was that all of the council members, because there was interest by other council members to participate in a rotation, that perhaps the council members could get together and bring back some recommendations of how we could come up with something that would work for all of you.
And I asked that we could bring them back.
I thought the way we left it was exactly like it states in the proposed minutes, that we were asked to bring our ideas forward to the city manager.
If you had ideas, and that was the mayor's recommendation.
Yeah.
That was not mine.
Yeah.
It does state that. Also, discussion, I know that in minutes, minutes aren't like notes. It's supposed to give a gist, I believe, and it's not like a transcript, so all the specific things that were discussed are not necessarily needed in the minutes. They're in the tape, as you say. Is there something specific that you would like added to the discussion ensued regarding the future of the program, or what do you want?
I think I pretty much outlined what I think is the important reasons why I went to it, and why I implemented it, and have been doing it for the last two and a half years. I think those should be in there. And I think that the point where I had stated that I have not excluded anyone from attending any of those is important, and that other council individuals have participated, and that any of you, I don't think, need a personal or a special invitation from me, that you're all welcome at any time, and I think that's important to put in there.
Mayor, Mr. City Council, just to try to see if I've captured the essence of Councilmember Melama in your statement regarding an amendment to this item. Forgive me for being a little fractional in how I'm saying this, when I'm going to try to write it as I say it, but, or I'll write it just after I say it, but basically the amendment would be to include Councilmember Melama's statements regarding his, regarding the initial concept of having the meeting, in addition that he has not excluded anybody from attending that around council. Is that genuine?
Yes, and also the reason why I initiated it at the beginning.
I put some, I kind of tweaked that one statement about Melama explained his reasons for implementing the program. See if this sounds okay, Councilmember Melama. Councilmember Melama explained that his reasons for implementing the program were in response to misinformation in the community, and that he explained that it was not exclusive, and that any other member is welcome to attend. Is that about right? Does everybody agree that's kind of what he said?
I remember him saying that he's never denied attendance to anyone.
Right. I also remember.
Which he has never been inviting somebody.
Okay, discussions you really want to issue.
Are opening it up.
I don't think I gave anyone, I've never given anyone a special invitation. I don't think anyone needs a special invitation.
Look, I don't want us to get lost here. We were just talking about how we need to get the minutes amended based on what was discussed at the last meeting. I don't think that we should continue that conversation right now. So we just need to know what the amendment requested is.
That's what I was commenting on, but anyway, I would concur with what you have presented. I wouldn't go over that.
Did you jot that down?
Okay.
Just send it over?
After the meeting.
Okay. That's it?
After the meeting, script.
It's kind of tweaky, but we.
And my other thing on the minutes was Mr. Stevens' comments at the end. Those are missing.
I think the summation of this statement is there.
It did say here that Stevens noted that there has been a lot of council discussion and decision-making regarding this litigation. He stated that the community cannot move forward if the emphasis is on right and wrong, rather than on the full picture.
I'm sure.
Is that what we're talking about?
Is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
I don't, I'm not sure on that. I mean, that's probably exact, I mean, that's fine with what it is.
Okay, so then the amendment will be for the wording that TI has here for what Mr. Melama would like to see in the minutes. So based on that amendment.
I think if we're going to have a motion, we need to be more clear, and I'm not clear on what that is. Could you repeat it, please?
What the, what I changed.
What the amendment is going to be.
That in the section where it says Melama explained his reasons for implementing the program, I've expanded that to say that Melama explained that his reasons for implementing the program were in response to misinformation in the community, discussion and, wait a second. He also explained that the program was not exclusive, and that anyone is welcome to attend.
Any council member?
Yeah, and anybody else too, for that matter.
Never turn a person down.
Does that make sense? Does that help?
It does, and I, the only thing I hadn't added, and I talked to Mr. Petcha about it, was this was newer. We've done the statements, you know, like a written statement, and that in the, I just asked him that we make sure we do that consistently in the future, you know, for statements. The idea is fine, just asked him to make sure, because I had recently done one that didn't get, or I asked it to make sure it was in the minutes, and it wasn't, so just to make sure if we do it, we're consistent with that, if a council member.
Did you provide a written statement to put into the minutes?
I did not, and that's, we clarified that, but if we want something to make sure it's noted in the, that we're consistent on how we do that.
You know, what would be really helpful is that when we get this, packets on Thursday, if when we look through it, something needs to be changed in the minutes, or in the documents, whatever, that it go in writing to Sandy so that she can give us something and say, this is our amended minutes. We could just approve those, and we don't have to do this.
And if we're going to commit to do that in writing to Sandy so that she can have it ready for the meeting, when should we have that back to her?
Realistically, as soon as possible. There may or may not necessarily always be an opportunity for the city clerk to turn that around, depending upon what other projects or priorities might be happening. Ultimately, the city council, as they've done this evening, would have that chance to make any amendments as a part of your public meeting. So even, even when or if there is another version of draft minutes prepared in advance that would be at your table here, you would still have, you still do publicly review them and then approve them.
So if we needed something to be, or we would like something to be amended, then we would send it to Sandy ahead of time, but also bring along a written version of it to provide to the council for consideration?
Yeah, that would actually be a great thing. Again, it's possible that the city clerk may or may not necessarily.
And that's understandable.
Or even if she is, it just may not be something that we have a chance to get to before the meeting, but we'll certainly try our best, and if all else, we'll have this opportunity to amend or reply.
Well, based on this discussion, I think that we have a better idea moving forward. If there's something that we wanted to, we want to be amended, hopefully we'll get everything that Councilmember Melama would like, but in the future, if we come prepared with something in writing, that would be helpful. So based on those amendments, could we get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Okay, so while we're making changes, I just want to get the spelling of my name correct. Under the city manager's report, my last name is spelled incorrectly in the second paragraph.
We need to fix that.
I'm sorry, where's the location?
City manager's report, a second paragraph or a sentence.
Ah.
Ah.
Usually it's my name that's stuck.
Okay, is there anything else?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the meetings from the
council meeting on September 2nd amended as discussed.
Okay, and before we take a vote, I believe under the good of the order, in the third paragraph, David Riser's name is spelled incorrectly also, so we should fix that.
Well, there we go.
And in the public comment, too.
Okay.
Public comment, too?
And she went, yeah. Okay, now, based on all of those amendments.
Every last one.
Every last one of them, with a motion and a support, could we have a roll call, Marcus?
Councilmember Spelman.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Melama.
Yes.
Councilmember Shipper's.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes, motion carries. The next thing that we have on our agenda this evening is proclamation, and the proclamation is recognizing October 2014 as National Arts and Humanities Month, and I believe we have some representatives here to accept that proclamation. If you would, come forward, please. And if you would stand here, Matilda can come up here by me, and if you would tell everyone who you are and your role.
Caitlin Adams. I'm choir director at Cadillac High School in Junior High.
Mike Filkins, I am the Cadillac School Band Director and conduct the Cadillacs at the art district.
Okay, the proclamation recognizing October as National Arts and Humanities Month, whereas the arts community of the Cadillac area would like to bring attention to the special mark that art and humanities have placed in our community, and whereas, for as long as Cadillac has existed, the city has had performances, community music groups, artist groups, and performances, performance venues, and whereas, there have been important libraries housed in the city, marking the importance of literary arts to the community, and some 18 different arts and culture groups have been in the city over the past 50 years, encouraging awareness for dance, visual art, music, poetry, and books, as well as recognizing the importance of various cultures that were part of the founding of our city. And whereas, the Cadillac City Government was the impetus behind the formation of a band in the public schools in the 1920s, and arranged for a whistle stop by none other than John Philip Sousa to conduct the Cadillac School Band while on his way to an appearance at the National Music Camp at Interlock in Michigan. And whereas, the National Arts and Humanities Month is a coast-to-coast collective celebration of the cultures, culture in America, and each year since 1993, this event has helped give millions of Americans the opportunity to explore new facets of the arts and humanities in their lives, and has encouraged them to begin a lifelong habit of active participation. And whereas, National Arts and Humanities Month's four primary goals are to create a national, state, and local focus on the arts and humanities through the media, encourage the active participation of individuals as well as arts, humanities, and other interested organizations nationwide, provide an honor, an opportunity for federal, state, and local business government and civic leaders to declare their support for the arts and humanities, and establish a highly visible vehicle for raising public awareness about the arts and humanities. And whereas, our history is a testament to the boundless capacity of the arts and humanities to shape our views of democracy, freedom, and tolerance, and each of us knows what it is like to have our beliefs changed by a writer's perspective, our understanding deepened by a historian's insight, or our waning spirit lifted by a singer's voice. And these are some of the most striking and memorable moments in our lives, and they reflect lasting truths, that the arts and humanities speak to everyone, and that in the great arsenal of progress, the human imagination is our most powerful tool. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Carla J. Filkins, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, do hereby recognize the valuable role that arts and humanities play in the Cadillac community, and do hereby proclaim and recognize October 2014 as National Arts and Humanities Month, presented this 15th day of September 2014.
Watch for the cable. Nice job, Mike.
He didn't step on it.
I know.
Okay, so, tonight we have two community spotlights, and the first one will be the presentation of sand from Omaha Beach that arrived here during the 70th anniversary of D-Day, and Mike Filkins, and who else is going to present this, and Joel Spry.
Can you say something first?
Sure.
Okay, I'm allowed to do that?
Sure, I think so.
Okay, in June of this year, on the 70th anniversary of D-Day, the Stevensville Lake Shore High School marching band played 10 performances in four days in Normandy, France. Part of their mission was to take from 18 different communities, sand that was collected in those communities, and mix it all together, and take a piece of Michigan over to the 491 servicemen who are, whose remains are still in Normandy, France, because they never made it back after the invasion. Those students individually received a vial like this with sand from Michigan that they placed on those graves, and it was an incredibly powerful experience for those kids. The entire band went down, and two of their trumpeters played taps on Omaha Beach as the rest of the band stood arm in arm in full uniform, and they gathered sand from Omaha Beach to bring back and return to those 18 communities. This summer, Eric Bowday, who is Vice President of Whirlpool, and was the coordinator of the Michigan Remember Project, came up here on a beautiful Saturday morning, because his family owns a cottage on Sunset Point, and they were vacationing, so they brought, everybody else had. -- everybody else had their ship to them, and he brought ours in person. And this says, "This sand from Omaha Beach was collected by the Stevensville Baroda Lake Shore High School Band on June 6, 2014, for the 70th anniversary of D-Day. It is presented to your school in appreciation of the sand you provided from your area. It was poured with the sand of 17 other Michigan schools on the graves of the total 666 Michigan soldiers resting in American cemeteries of Normandy, France." Below, there's a photograph of students from the band standing on Omaha Beach, and it says, "May we ever remember the meaning of D-Day?" And I know that because schools are a place where people are constantly moving around, things like this may not get noticed. So this summer, you know, I mentioned that what I'd like to do is to have the school present this to the city, to keep in perpetuity in City Hall, where more people might see it and understand what it's done. The city had an active hand in our gathering of the sand, because if it had not been for Al Dumont, going out there, cutting a three-foot-by-three-foot hole in 24 inches of ice and snow on March 22nd, we would have never gotten to the beach at Kenwood. And then his staff broke up the sand, which was hard as concrete, just so that Steve Birdwell and Mayor Filkins could step down into that hole and dig the sand out that we then sent to Normandy, France. So with Superintendent Joe Spry, I would like to present this to the city.
Do you want me to come on? Okay. Thank you. Don't drop it. For now, sweet. Wonderful. Thank you again. And our second community spotlight will be the presentation of Mishkanka World Tour. So if you'd like to come on.
I came up with that crazy name in 2008, and if you just say Mishkanka, it's easy to say. And what it stands for is Michigan, Canada, and Alaska. When we did our famous ride in 2010, that was 4,400 miles, and 78 people participated, eight of them, or 10 of them, rather, from the Cadillac Winter Warriors right here in Cadillac, and their names are on the plaque on the wall over here. But it was a tremendous success. We did the ride in honor of people that have diabetes. I'm a Vietnam veteran, and by the way, I'd like to thank you very much for the way you honored our men and women. That was really, really thoughtful. But my diabetes came from exposure to Agent Orange and Vietnam while I was serving my country there. So when we did this big ride, I decided I would have that ride for a fundraiser for diabetes research. And it was a phenomenal ride. 54 people made it all the way. We rode through five states, five provinces, and four time zones. We had four women on the ride. Three of them were with their husbands, and one was a lady from New York who rode by herself with the group. And we raised an incredible $102,000 for diabetes research in one snowmobile ride. And that whole idea and the birthplace of Mishkanka is right here in Cadillac. So this year, because we're doing another phenomenal ride, I wanted to do something special for the city I call my home now, born and raised in Detroit, typical transplant. But I'll tell you what, I'm done moving. I will never leave here. There is only one thing that will make me leave, and you know what that is. But I'd like to just go over the highlights of the brochure that I put together for all the council members. And I guess I should, for the record, my name is Bill Bradfield. I live at 6131 West 48 Road, Cadillac, Michigan, 49601. So, Mayor, council members, and residents, it's been six years since I attended the October 2008 meeting of the Cadillac Winter Warriors Snowmobile Club, and introduced the now-famous Iditarod of snowmobiling from Michigan to Alaska, 4,400 miles through five states, five provinces, and four time zones. Winter adventure and philanthropy mixed together for a truly historic journey, raising $102,000 in one snowmobile ride for diabetes research. The Mishkanka Club did so well that in the last five years, we have won every possible award from the Michigan Snowmobile Association, a tribute from the governor, Senate, and House of Representatives, proclamations and keys to the cities of Cadillac, Sault Ste. Marie, and Toko, Alaska. Since the initial ride, we have collectively ridden 440,000 miles in the last five years. And I'm talking about a group, you're looking at me, this is the age average. So that's really saying something about a group, you know, that's 65 to 75 years old. And we've collected tens of thousands of dollars for diabetes research. Diabetes affects the lives of 29 million Americans, 303 million people worldwide, and there's more deaths annually from diabetes than there is from AIDS and breast cancer combined. So it's a real killer that we face every day. We're now in preparation to embark on a second historic adventure, which is our sixth annual ride to help find a cure for diabetes. The official kickoff ceremony will be February 5 at 9:00 a.m. at the Coyote Crossing Resort. We would appreciate having Mayor Filkins address the group at that time, as well as other honored guests. Some of the other guests might be Congressman Huzenga, it might be the governor, and the president of the Michigan Snowmobile Association will be on hand for the event as well. The Cadillac Winter Warriors will then lead the group, including foreign riders, on our trail system with a planned lunch stop in Cadillac West. The ride will then proceed to Sault Ste. Marie for three days of riding, Ontario for three days of riding. After two days off, we will fly to Norway, then proceed to ride in Norway, Sweden, Finland, and Russia, with stops in Paris and London on the way back. So it's going to be quite an undertaking, quite an agenda, but we've got a group of dedicated people putting it together. And at present, the ride has been endorsed by the Michigan Snowmobile Association, the International Snowmobile Congress, the American Diabetes Association, the Canadian Diabetes Association, the mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, and dozens of others. The City of Sault Ste. Marie has formed a coalition of the mayor, city manager, council, Chamber of Commerce, Visitors Bureau, and local newspaper to assist us with this event. We would like to give the City of Cadillac the recognition it deserves, but we need your help. I am asking that the mayor and council will step forward and assist me in forming a committee to endorse this precedent-setting adventure that in all likelihood will be one-of-a-kind and will never happen again. And I've worked in the past with other cities, including City Sault Ste. Marie, and put the whole thing together. I'll be working, doing almost all the work to put this thing together. And the day of the kickoff, which is February 5, is also the first day of the North American Snow Festival. We've never had an event in that morning. It starts that night with the Chili Cook House, and I'm also on the Board of Directors for the North American Snow Festival. So I plan on taking all this information to them on Wednesday, and I'm sure that we'll get a positive agreement with them, that they'll want to go ahead and include this as part of NASF. So right now, with all the other endorsements we've got, I'm looking right at you, Ms. Mayor, and I'm hoping that you will be so kind, after you read all this information, to give us a letter of endorsement. So when I go out and promote the ride and the event in the City of Cadillac, it gives me great credentials. It gives the group credentials. And those credentials, and when we get, we get great coverage from the Cadillac News, and every time that happens, you see the influx of donations really grow. So as a community event, it's good for all of us. Snowmobiling is great for the area. And we just wanted to make sure the Cadillac got their due share of public relations this time, because there will never be another snowmobile ride that's considered a world tour. It just won't happen again. People said that when we did the Alaskan Ride, your record won't hold forever, Bill. Somebody's going to beat it. And after hearing that a number of times, I finally said, "Yeah, you know what? You're right. Someone is going to beat it, and I know who it is." And he'd say, "Well, who's that?" And I'd say, "I'm going to beat it. Mishkanka's going to beat it. We're going to do a world tour." So we took a little bit of heat. People said we wouldn't make it all the way. They said you'd never get a big group of people to go. We wouldn't raise much money. And we definitely proved the naysayers all wrong. And when we came back, we were proud. The Vice President of Diabetes Research Institute flew to Cadillac. We had our meeting at the Sands. He stood in front of the group, gave a speech, and uncovered a table full of trophies, and called each rider up one at a time, and presented them with a trophy for all the good work that we did. So Mishkanka's a really good group of people. It's born and raised right here in Cadillac. It has Cadillac address. And we've got some great endorsements. But what I really am hoping that we can get from you folks tonight, if you think it's right, is a letter from the mayor. And some of you want to join us in the meetings. The meetings will be about every six weeks. They'll be very low-keyed. I'll do all the work in between. But I'd like to have your input, because there's a lot of good people up here with good ideas, and I don't want them to go unnoticed. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Bradfield, when you have your meetings scheduled, if you'd like to let me know, I'd be happy to pass along the date, time, and meeting location to the city council. Members could then attend.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do, because you people will be key, is I'd like you to give me some input on when is a good day. You know, my first thought was like the night of council meetings, but I saw you were pretty busy tonight. That might not work. So you give me an idea. Marcus, if you take a poll of everybody, and then we'll go from there. But we'll do the same kind of things here that we've done in Sault Ste. Marie. There'll be a benefit dinner. We'll do a luncheon at some restaurant in Cadillac West. In Nashville, we'll do a lot of promoting for diabetes research.
And then, Mayor, members of the city council, with respect to Mr. Bradfield's request for endorsement, that's something that the council could handle this evening simply by a request for motion to endorse the 2015 Mishkanka Snowmobile World Tour.
Well, I think it would be very important for us to do that. So I would definitely like to do it. Have you been speaking with Joy Vendry at the Visitors Bureau at all?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Ms.
Have you been speaking with Joy Vendry at the Visitor's Bureau?
I'll be speaking with Joy either tomorrow or Wednesday, because Joy is real active with the North American Snow Festival, as you're well aware.
She is. And so I just wanted to make sure she had all of your information as well, so when she's putting together all of her marketing materials, that she's able to focus on this really special aspect of it.
Yeah, what I'll do, Mayor, is I'll call her tomorrow morning. And then I also get, kind of get ahold of the Chamber of Commerce. The Cadillac News has done a great job for us in the past, so that's no problem at all.
Okay. And I would be happy to speak at your event on the 5th of February.
I'm sorry?
And I'd be happy to speak at your event.
Okay.
Out at Coyote Crossing.
We, so you know, there are five Russians that are flying to--
I don't speak Russian.
They're leaving their AK-47s in Russia, they promised me. But they're flying to Michigan on February 4, I believe. They're going to spend a night at my house, and the next morning, we'll be right there to Coyote. And I have members of the Cadillac Winter Warriors that are going to escort us on a ride from the Coyote Crossing, which is at a trailhead, through the trail system into Cadillac West. And there's going to be people from Canada, and possibly some Swedes also. So--
Well, we can talk more outside of this meeting with you about the different opportunities for the council to interact with the guests that will be coming into the community. So not to speak for everyone, but I, you know, I think that it would be very interesting for us to have that interaction.
That'd be great. That's the kind of help that we need.
It's exciting having it back, because you came before us in 2010, and that worked out wonderful. It made Cadillac the home, and that video was phenomenal that they put of that trip. And I'd like to make a motion that the city council support and endorse the 2015 Snowmobile World Tour for Diabetes Research, and show that endorsement through a letter of support.
I'll support that. Marcus, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Melma.
Yes.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Spelman.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, people. I really appreciate it. One more thing I'd like to say, since Art mentioned the videofilm, the riders in the group dug in their own pockets. There were 78 of us when we did the Alaskan Ride, and came up with $25,000 to hire two videographers to ride with us and video film that entire ride. And the premiere showing was in Lansing in December of 2010. We sold those videos online, and they've been on public service stations all over the world for about the last three years, and Cadillac's right in there. And Cadillac will be in this one, too. Thanks again.
I just had one quick answer. But could you let the public know the average age of those that went to Mishkanka? Because to me, that was phenomenal.
The average age when we did the Alaskan Ride was 62 years old. And one individual was 82 years old. And I'm telling you the truth, every morning after my 6:15 meeting, and we got to the sleds at 8 o'clock to start, he was there every day. I never had to push him one time. And furthermore, he's 87 today, and he's going to Russia with me.
He is.
I mean, if he walked in here today, you'd guess he's in his late 60s.
That's wonderful. You're keeping him young.
Yeah. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing that we have on the agenda is communications from this evening. Marcus?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item under communications is a request from the Friends of Library for the display of a banner from October 20, 2014, to October 27, 2014, for the Friends of the Library Week.
I'll make a motion to display a banner from October 20 to the 27 for the Friends of the Library Week.
Support.
Okay.
Could we have a roll call?
Roll call. Councilmember Melma?
Yes.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Our next item is a request from the Cadillac High School Athletic Director, Rich Giddens, with respect to the upcoming homecoming parade, which is to be held on October 3, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. They do require parade setup commencing at 4:00 p.m., and the route is to begin on Lake Street to West Harris Street, north on Mitchell Street to Pine Street, west on Pine Street to Chestnut Street, ending at the high school. I don't believe this is any different than what the council has approved in the past. And Mr. Giddens is here this evening.
Thanks, Marcus.
Good.
We're here to celebrate Cadillac's homecoming again this year, and we're requesting and asking the city council to approve our parade route. We will close off the streets at 4 o'clock and still allow access to the library. That always seems to be kind of a snafu. We try to block all the way off down to Cadillac Square Marina area, Lake Street, I guess. I know that dates me, but anyway. And we will start promptly at 5 o'clock and continue our parade route with that, ending up at the high school for our homecoming football game that evening. So we're looking to get that approved.
It's hard to believe it's that time of year again.
It is. It is that time.
I would just like to say that it's really nice that there's going to be a parade for my birthday.
It is?
Yeah. So I'm convinced--
You should be in the parade.
So then, we'll expect you to line up at 4 o'clock.
We'll have it right beside, behind the city police car.
Yeah, the grand marshal. There you are.
Wear a birthday crown.
But we invite, obviously, it's all the schools. We get out an hour early for release time to bring all our families and stuff down to the downtown area. And we try to advertise it to the downtown businesses that, you know, we release an hour early, and kids and parents and stuff will be eating downtown and those kind of things. So. And hopefully the weather will cooperate.
All right, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the parade route for the Cadillac High School homecoming parade as presented.
Support.
Support.
Marcus, could we have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The next item is a request from United Way for the display of a banner from September 29th, 2014, to October, through October 6th, 2014, and then again, from October 27th, 2014, to November 3rd, 2014.
Okay. Is anyone from United Way here this evening?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the display of a banner for the United Way from September 29th to October 6th, and again, from October 27th to November 3rd.
Support.
Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. That concludes communications.
Yep.
And to our next section, I do have a request for approval of a reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority. The request is for the reappointment of Stephanie Trombley to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2018.
And has Stephanie been contacted, Marcus?
She has.
Okay.
The impressive part of this is she's already served 16 years.
That's pretty amazing.
Yes, pretty, yes.
And willing to continue to serve. That's very awesome. I'll make a motion to reappoint Stephanie Trombley to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2018.
Support. Okay.
Marcus, roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, I'm just going through back and forth my different little screens here.
You're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you are.
We'll try to slow down a little bit.
No, no. The next item is actually the first item under the City Manager's Report. This is an off-premise sign request regarding the First Church of Nazarene. Craft is our sign request. I'm not sure if anybody here from the church this evening, but I will advise that this request has been before the City Council in the past and prior years. We do have various conditions that are listed within your council agenda packet with respect to its approval, specifically that they comply with all the Michigan Department of Transportation standards as applicable, and that the period of display for this request also be limited from October 31st, 2014, through November 8th, 2014. The recommendation this evening is to approve the sign request accordingly.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the off-premise sign request for the First Church of the Nazarene as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item under the City Manager's Report is labeled Cobb's and Mitchell Building Update. Just to give some framework to this item prior to any council discussion, in the packet there is a communication piece that advises how the city in 2009 did receive title to the former Cadillac office of the Michigan Department of Transportation. That building is now known as is the Cobb's and Mitchell Building. The city did immediately sell this historic property to a developer that was awarded the project after the city had received bids or requests, proposals based upon a request for proposals, for the purposes of a private redevelopment and reuse of the facility. The facility itself, the Cobb's and Mitchell Building, has been granted an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to Act 146 of 2000. And taxes levied with the issuance of this certificate, there were then obsolete property taxes levied on the property beginning in the city's 2011 fiscal year. Unfortunately, the property currently is sitting with taxes being delinquent on the property. The city's Historic District Commission, or the HDC for short, has notably been very engaged with respect to the disposition of the property. Some might ask, well, you know, why is the Historic District Commission talking about this property? Well, the property itself is located in an historic district. The city actually created a special historic district just for that property. And so certainly, as they are the Historic District Commission, they have that opportunity to discuss those types of issues. Where does this lead us today? What is the City Council being asked to discuss, you might be wondering? And essentially, we're somewhat at a crossroads. The property taxes, as I mentioned, are currently delinquent. The property is still in private hands. It's still owned by a private owner or developer. The city, and without necessarily putting words in the HDC, would certainly love to see that property adaptively reused, preserved and protected, and become really a star of the city, as it certainly could be. As I continue down that same path, the property taxes are currently delinquent. And so, because of the status of the building, because of the fact that it is a building that's got an opri, or an obsolete property rehabilitation tax exemption, it is our requirement, or within our purview, to move forward on the initiation of foreclosure proceedings. That also being stated, unlike properties within the city limits, this, again, is unique. And should the property actually go back, if you will, on taxes, it does revert back to the city directly, it does not go back to the county. I bring that up because there was conversation over a year ago with respect to the former Mitchell Court Building, and whether or not the city desired to have that building under its own ownership and control. And for reference, the City Council said no. And when it went back on taxes, it stayed with the county, did not come to the city. The county basically gave us a right of refusal, if you will. So here we are this evening. The HDC had suggested that perhaps a task force get put together, or a work group get put together, with members from the HDC, members from the City Council, presumably there'd also be a member to the city staff involved in working on what to do with the property, how the property should, you know, what should happen with the property. My recommendation at this point is that that is a good idea and good advice. However, should perhaps wait until after we receive the property, if in fact, that eventually is what happens. Right now, the property is, again, privately held. The city doesn't have any authority or ability to really dictate terms to that property itself. If, in fact, the city does receive the property through foreclosure, then certainly, I see having that type of a task force put together as a very smart thing, because we're definitely gonna need to tap into local historic preservation experts that we have. We're gonna certainly want stakeholders from this council involved in the conversation as we look forward as to how to best handle this building. How, you know, can the city market it? If so, how? Should we look at bringing somebody else in? I mean, there could be a litany of issues, concerns, questions, and ideas that need to get bettered. So again, the purpose of the conversation tonight really is to discuss, should we be looking at initiating a foreclosure process? Should we not? And again, my suggestion is that we also keep in mind, or bear in mind, that we're gonna definitely wanna put together a group of people to really take this down the road. So, I'll stop my man.
Well, you know, I definitely think if they're three years delinquent on taxes, that we really need to think about starting that foreclosure process. And in doing that, you know, it still gives the current owners, you know, we would hope that they could figure out somehow to be successful. Even if we started that foreclosure proceeding right away, they would still have time in there to do something if they're ever going to. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct. I couldn't...
And do they have interest? I don't know.
Right. And I don't know exactly how long the process takes, but my guess is at least the better part of the year if we were to initiate foreclosure, just to go through all of the legal proceedings necessary.
Can I, I have to ask a question. What's the benefit of going through foreclosure proceedings if it looks like the building's going to be reverted to us anyway, in the long run?
That's a good question. Well? That's the only way that the building can be reverted back to us in this case, is through foreclosure, because there's not normal general property tax, general property tax, taxes.
That's hard.
That's a mouthful. That are delinquent on the parcel. So, the only remedy in this case is foreclosure, as you would through the mortgage foreclosure process. So the other remedy is not available.
Okay. I thought I heard Marcus say that it would be reverted back to us.
If the taxes aren't paid in the process, it could necessarily start. That's a much better, clearer answer.
And then we had, through this process, there's been some grants that the city has worked with them on. If I recall, we ended up using the Cool, some of the Cool Cities grants.
There was a Cool Cities grant that the developer received. It was $100,000, I thought.
And that was a city, that grant was to the city, and it then was, so we were still the administrator of that grant, but it all went to the property.
Right. But we don't know what they, what improvements they may have done to the building with that money?
There was a list of approved expenditures through the grant. So they had to comply with that and show receipts, and it was a reimbursement grant.
And then the other question, maybe for clarification for the council, is the Historic District Commission, they, initially, we had one that had a setup, I think, for the creation, and just that one with members, but is this one now part of the same one you're in, Mr. Wendover? For the commission? And they've been, you've been talking about this for some time, wanting to see some action on this. And I think we need to. This was a, as you mentioned, it was bid out, it was competitive. There were some, some of us were here when we made that agreement. And it was kinda clear about some of the expectations of what needed to be done. And we've got grants on the line, we've got tax dollars on the line, and I think the sell price was a dollar, if I recall. So I think anything the city can do to go forward in a fast pace would be appreciated. And I do like that idea of that task force getting together as well.
Right. Because there's gonna be some things to think about if that building actually comes back to the city, as in, you know, the materials that building is made of require that building to be heated. And so as long as the city owns that building, then we're gonna have to, that task force is gonna figure out how are we gonna pay to heat the building until it sells, or until we use it for whatever we use it for, to protect it.
Right. Is there some sort of action that we need?
We need a motion to move for foreclosure proceedings. I'll make that motion.
And do we have support?
Support.
And, you know, this didn't happen overnight. The Historic District Committee has been talking about it for a really long time. You know, it's been in their minutes. They've been wanting us to get involved.
Which is a time...
We've waited long enough for the owners to do anything if they were going to. I'm sure they're just walking away from it at this point. Okay.
I'd just like to add a thanks to the Historic District Commission for being on top of this, because these are the things that, without people watching like that, could just continue to get overlooked. And appreciate all the efforts you guys have done.
Absolutely. Okay, Marcus, could we have a roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, we have minutes of boards and commissions. And this evening, we just have the minutes from the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission meeting that was held on August 11th for our reading pleasure. At this time, we'll open the floor again for public comment. Again, it's limited to three minutes, and if you would please provide your name and address, that would be greatly appreciated. Your name.
Excuse me, Terry Harvey. 11 Sub-81 East Division.
Thank you.
I've looked at that building since I can remember, which is maybe back, can't remember last week, but I can remember back when it was about three or four. But followed the Baptist church for several years, and always admired that building. And I've been in it a few times, and it's not a building you want tore down or left open. And not sure where the $100,000 went, if that went into bookkeeping or where it went. I know for probably close to a year, the back glass door of the building was broken. I didn't see new glass in there, but they may have used money on something more important. But I think at the time the city did that, I think they could have looked closer locally and found a group, whether it was a historical group, or church group, or combination, that could have used that building with some form of agreement, where there could have been a co-use of it, which would have saved the money, saved the city money as far as upkeep of it, left the building with agreements where the public could be able to go in and see that building and use it for some events or something. But I think it would have been far better off to have been kept locally than to have sold for a dollar and give the developer another $100,000 to play with. And the other thing, I don't see a lot of foresight in the DDA's thought, or MDOT's, I'm not sure whose brilliant idea it was. You've got a building that size, you've got a church, you were going to have retail, office space, I think retail space, restaurant, you're going to have some sort of a convention deal on the third floor. Not sure where you're gonna park the cars. You took roughly 30 parking spaces off Main Street in front of that building. You can park maybe 15 or 20 vehicles on that parking lot. To do much of anything with it, I think you've gotta create some parking. And I don't think you can create it two blocks away. You know, some people like to walk, but it's ludicrous to do that. And I think the idea of the bump outs, the narrow parking spaces, that people are afraid to get out of their cars, has a mirror episode. I think they only lost nine mirrors, but that could have been nine people trying to squeeze between their door and the car to wait for a vehicle to go by. I think you're very lucky somebody hasn't had that happen. You go up on Granite Street, you've got probably five or six feet outside your car to walk. You go to Lake City, probably got a good six feet or eight feet outside your car. You go down to Mitchell Street, it's not safe to get out of a car. But MDOT, I believe, had the correct solution at the time that was done. But MDOT, I believe, had the correct solution at the time that was done. It's against the law to get out of the right hand side of your car. The only probably problem being, I think back in 62 or 63, probably 50 years ago, is when they started putting councils on cars and building cars different where you sit on the floor. And not very many vehicles can you climb out the right side of. I don't know if you've ever saw a police officer get out of patrol car downtown and climb over the equipment and get out the right side or, pretty uncommon. But I did see an elderly fellow that was scared to death up by the bank one day when I was in the wrong lane to move over and stop because his car was beside me or near my bumper. But he was clinging to the roof of his car and he didn't go wherever he's going. When traffic went by, he got back in his car and left. And I think that's a little short sighted when you've, you know, maybe it's pretty, but it makes no sense. And you can't do much with that building with awesome parking. And the other reason, I'm not sure if I'm past my three minutes. Did you check?
You'll find me out.
Marcus knows I'll be back anyway, right, Marcus?
I'm sorry, Terry?
I said, you know I'll be back anyway, but I've got to apply for an extension time period.
Okay. Thank you.
You never kicked anyone out before?
Hi, I'm Patty Kowalski. This is my son Judd. And my mom and dad live, lived down Chestnut Street, 614 Chestnut Street for years and years. They passed away and my son Judd bought that house. Next door to his house is kind of recently a vacant lot, 610 Chestnut. And he, what he did, I haven't lived in town in a long time and he's never, or hasn't lived in town in a long time. We did not know that he needed a permit to put up a fence, so he put up the fence. Well, he got a letter. And it says that the materials that he used were not allowed in a residential district. I kind of, I kind of have to disagree with that because if you go around his neighborhood, I mean, there's all kinds of that kind of fence. It was done, I think tastefully. If anybody knows what piece of property I'm talking about, believe me, it's a big, big improvement what he's doing. He's working hard, he's trying to, you know, clean this, clean this lot up. He took, there was a picture taken of it with a boat sitting in his yard. Well, he lives across the street from, you know, from the lake. Be nice to have a boat in your yard. And a utility trailer that was full of brush and he's taken numerous trailers full of brush out of this, out of this property. What else was there, John?
My must.
Oh, he had, he had his, he had his car parked there too, which, you know, I mean, all of this, I guess, is just coming down to, it's a work in progress. He's, he put that fence up for his dog to have a little more room. He was excited that he had a bigger yard. It was meant to be temporary until springtime so he could save up some money to put up a privacy fence there. He spoke to all the neighbors around there and they are all delighted that he got this piece of property and what he has done to it already. Like I said, he's, it was just a temporary fence, which it still looks nice, but he's, his plan is to put a privacy fence up. So I guess I was just, I'm just kind of, I don't know what I should say. Well, that he would, you know, he works, he works hard, he spent his money to put this fence up and now he's, he's saying that, you know, we're saying that we have to take it down or he has to take it down. Like I said, it was just supposed to be until next spring. I guess the, the bad part about it is that, is that I didn't advise him and he didn't know that he had to get the permit. So I, I don't know, you know, where we can go from here. You know, he, he went around the neighborhood and has got addresses of people that have the same fence that he does. You know, like I said, it's, it's just supposed to be temporary, you know? And then he wants to put up a nice, you know, a nice privacy fence, but, you know, in the meantime...
First of all, I would, I would just say thank you for caring about the property. You know, there are ordinances in the city for a reason, so I guess I wonder, did you call whoever issued the letter to have any conversation with them or the city manager?
Yes, yeah, you did, didn't you, Judd?
Yeah, I talked to Mike Coy the other day.
All right.
Whenever he received the letter.
Okay.
And he said that, that the material isn't approved in the city, but I was just wondering if there's anything that I can do to, so I don't have to tear it all down.
Right. Well, if I could suggest, if the rest of the council doesn't mind, perhaps you can set up a meeting with Mr. Coy and Marcus, the city manager, and have a conversation about, you know, the materials and why the ordinance and the type of materials are currently in place that are.
Yeah.
Because the neighbors may have fences of that material, but that could have been there a while and things update.
Yeah, and that is an older neighborhood, so they are, you know, you know, same kind of fence. Like I said, my mom and dad owned that property forever and it's the same kind of fence that he used.
And that's the importance of getting the permit. So if you ever do work like that again, that's the importance of getting the permit so that the city's folks can help you with, you know, what you need to know moving forward.
Maybe we can work on that agreement.
I believe you too.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we can talk to Marcus.
Right.
Because he's considered, I guess, he's saying that it's, it's his front yard, which it's, it's not because it's his side yard, you know? And like I said, if, if you know what property I'm talking about, I mean, what he's done already is such a big improvement.
It's a great improvement.
Yes, and I mean, and it was pretty rough.
Well, I would really encourage you to set up that, that conversation and, and you know, as Councilmember Spelman said, you know, it's, your plan is to do something different with it in the spring and perhaps during, you know, more conversations, something could be worked out. I don't make any promises, but, but I certainly think that it's worth the conversation.
Yeah, okay, great.
So thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks.
Hello, my name's Awana, built from a minute 1523 Platte. There's been a lot of the accidents happening, not just downtown, but like 13th Street you hear about all the time, the, where the roundabout thing is, I've heard of some. Going through there, now that I, I go that way a lot, there's one light and a stoplight right by 13th and, and Mitchell, where Walgreens is. You can't see a thing. If it's raining or if it's dark out, you have one street light to light up that whole area. And it's the same thing with like over there by Platte. I believe it's the same thing out by the highway. I don't know who regulates that, but if, you know, you'd have to be able to see, but if you've only got one light and you've had a bunch of accidents there, I don't know who you, who I could talk to about, maybe you might put up two lights, you know, to, because it's really, if you only have one light in a four-way intersection, somebody's losing and you can't see a thing. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public comment for this evening and we'll move into good of the order. And with good of the order this evening, we will go ahead and start with Councilmember Shippers.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Mayor Philkins and everybody else. A couple of things. First of all, I, I think I'll just do one thing. This Wednesday is the 17th of, of September will be the 225th anniversary of the United States Constitution. And it's Constitution Day. And I would just like to remind everyone that you should take a look at your constitution and how, and also state how glad I am that it is a fluid document that changes with the times or not only would we not be sitting on this board, but we would not have been allowed to vote for it, along with many other people. So just happy Constitution Week to everybody. And I know, I've been reading a lot that, you know, on the social media sites, people saying kids aren't saying the Pledge of Allegiance at school anymore and they're not doing this and all that. And I'm here to say that the Pledge of Allegiance is alive and well in our public schools, as is the celebration of our constitution and our national anthem, which we just did a celebration here. And I know I'm doing that at, at my school and, and American history, American patriotism and the respect that goes that way is alive and well with our children. I'd also like to just make a, I know it's, it's kind of weird, but, you know, reading in the paper that there might be ulterior motives to a youth council kind of surprised me. And I think, I'm hoping that people realize that the purpose for having a youth council is to involve our young people and in public service and get them aware of how they can be a part of our community. And beyond that then, with this being Constitution Week, how they can then transfer that to be in a fully operating American citizen and citizen of our town. So I hope that no one is discouraged from pursuing that and I really look forward to working with the young people here in Cadillac.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Well, first, thanks for bringing up Constitution Week since I'm always the, you guys probably think I have a big celebration since I'm always talking about and needing to follow it, so I appreciate that. And it's the reason we do it, is it's amazing, like you said, that document, how old it is, how it's had some changes, but not many for how many years, and how when it's followed, things work effectively. And it's a good time to reflect on the state constitution and as well as our local one as the same time, just to make sure that we're following it because that's why it's there. So thanks for bringing that up. I wondered too, I liked what Awana added to that and just to see if there might be a way for council to find out if, you know, on the lighting situation, if there is anything that falls into our, if we have anything we can do on that. That's been brought up multiple times and was brought up even when the roundabout was being talked. And I don't know if we have any jurisdiction or not, but it would be nice to kind of get an idea if we, if we can have any involvement in that.
I need to look into it.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could. And I'm glad that the superintendent stayed. I almost interrupted our order of business when we were doing the parade. I, last Tuesday was at the school and Superintendent Sprague should be very proud. I know we, I kind of mentioned this one time before, but the It's Okay to Say program, which is a new statewide program for, for Michigan, and it's through the Attorney General's office, but Cadillac, the city of Cadillac is where it was kicked off and originated from here. And the superintendent had a lot of involvement with that. And it's an outstanding program where kids can, through a confidential source, which I was impressed at how many different ways they can do it. They can contact if they're being bullied, if they know of any violence that's going to be happening, drug use, et cetera, for multiple purposes. And it gets them filtered right to an outside agency, the state police is involved in the shares department. And this program is going to be something that is known through Michigan for a lot of years and Cadillac is the home of where this all started and with the Harrison family and such. An amazing event. And if you get a chance, the, the singer of the song It's Okay to Say actually performed it there. I still have that in my head all the time going through. It's a phenomenal song, but it's a great program. I just want to give credit to the schools and the hospitality you had that day was phenomenal with your staff as well. So I'm glad you stuck around because I was going to mention this and it's nice having you in the audience for that and congratulations. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Melo?
I'll start out with, last week Tuesday, we had our first Cadillac area manufacturers meeting at Piranha Hoes. And we had ASE, American Society of Employers. And we discussed quite a few HR issues and we had a good turnout, about 20 members. And our next meeting is October 14th. And 10 years ago, I convinced the, maybe longer than that, convinced the manufacturers that we could learn a lot from the big box stores. And we did a tour of Myers. And at that time, Al Blackmire was the manager. Well, that's where we're going October 14th. There's been a lot of requests to go back. Nobody does inventory better than large box stores. It's not hard to figure out why, their margin of profit and their volume. And it's one of the largest employers in our area. So that is on the slate. Then last week, Wednesday, we did issues over coffee. We had very poor weather. I think that affected the, the, the size of the group. It was small but mighty, the group. But we had three individuals. And there was a variety of topics that came up. And one was township, what services townships require or request from Cadillac and our role in that. And we got into history on how the fire department got involved in answering some of those emergency calls and what had happened to one of our industries. And so we got a historical perspective. I was able to shed some light on that because I was probably the only one that was around that long. We got into water issues and some, what was involved. Our, our Jeff was there and so that was very good and Mike Coy. We got into bike safety, questions on that and problems in that area and what could be done. And Mike shed a lot of information in that regard and, and also walking traffic and some of the concerns in those areas. So we had a good discussion. And like I said, I think the weather affected our, we were down from 12 to 15 from the month before down to three, but it was a mighty group and we had a variety of discussions. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmembers.
We were talking about the Cobbson Mitchell building. I drove by it the other day and it's just the way I approached it, I think, because this had never, I'd never thought about this before, but here's my idea. It's not an art center, sorry, but I like that one too. But it just came over me. I wasn't even thinking, oh, what could this be used for? It's a perfect building for a museum. It is a perfect building for a museum. I mean, I think of so many of these towns that I've been in with their old building museums and that's, it was just staring at me, oh, that's a museum.
Children's museum.
That's my two cents worth related to that building. It's going to be interesting because, you know, these things cost a ton of money and a lot of, take a lot of planning and we do have an opportunity in front of us. Sounds like we're moving forward with that. I read with interest that the Dog Park Committee has, once again, decided that they want to look at another location for the Dog Park. And I was a little confused about the article, but I, I think what they're looking at now is the back part of Kenwood Park, which abuts West Division, not 13th Street, as an article, either in the paper or somewhere that I read said, but West... said, but West Division. And so I believe the concept right now is that the Dog Park, they're looking at the area behind the Frisbee Golf area in Kenwood Park. And as a council member and as a community member, I am requesting that we see early drawings of what that might look like, or be involved in that conversation early on. My concern is, or my desire, I should say, is that we continue to have walking trails in Kenwood Park that has historically been a place for walking paths and walking trails, and little by little, they've been eroded with the addition of Frisbee Golf course additions. We still have a walking trail that goes all the way around the perimeter of it. I've tried to get it signed, I've tried to get it maintained, and, and I have had very little luck with that endeavor, and so I'm really concerned now that there's discussion about putting a Dog Park there. I think there's probably room for both, but this is my desire, is that somebody maintains those walking trails and that they don't get eliminated. It's such a wonderful asset that we have, that we can actually use these trails and for walking, biking, taking a dog for a walk or whatever. It would be a shame to see them go away. And the last thing I have tonight is just a happy anniversary to my husband, because it's our anniversary today.
Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary. And I have a city council meeting.
How many?
Nineteen years.
Wow. Congratulations.
I was going to ask, but I didn't want to put her on the spot.
So you'll go home and he'll have dinner and everything ready for you?
No, no, no. We had lunch together. Oh, okay.
I remember the night she proposed to him.
Yeah, somebody else said that.
Prairie Home Companion at Interlocken.
I remember that.
Wow.
Why I remember that. Okay, Marcus.
Thank you, mayor members of the city council. Just wanted to mention that, as I think you are all aware of, at this point, the city received what is perhaps one of the very largest grants ever. We have gotten a notification from the state of Michigan of our success in receiving a $2 million stormwater and wastewater asset management grant. The grant has a zero match, zero local match provision assigned to it, which is very, very nice, so we do not have to come up with any additional matching funds. The primary purpose of the grant is to develop a very formalized and very comprehensive asset management plan that will essentially tell us everything that we ever wanted to know and more on our stormwater and wastewater infrastructure under the ground. In addition to that, I believe half a million dollars of the grant is then to be set aside to use for a capital project that is identified by the asset management plan itself. We are going to very likely need to bring on a consultant. As councilmen may or may not recall, we did have Brian and Newhoff help us with our Phase One, and they did an absolutely tremendous job for the city. We will likely need to bring on a consultant now for this Phase Two, since we have been awarded or received notice of, of the award for the, for the grant. So that's just really, really great news that I wanted to share with the city council. That was my report.
Wonderful. Thank you. From my perspective this evening, I was very happy to see at the top of our agenda this evening a guiding behavior. We communicate openly, honestly, respectfully, and directly, and I think that we did a wonderful job of that this evening, so thank you all very much. In the last couple of weeks since we have met, I had the honor of attending the philanthropist of the year celebration here in Cadillac through the Community Foundation, and this year's recipients for that award were Dr. Allen and Susan Meyer. I don't know how many of you know them. He's a veterinarian here in town, longtime veterinarian. It was a wonderful event and a well-deserved award for both of them. Very funny. They were, they're awesome people, very down-to-earth. On Friday evening, I also had the opportunity to participate in the celebration of our Star Spangled Banner and its history, and there was a performance by the Cadillac Orchestra, Cadillac High School Band, and the Cadillac Choir. And through music and through readings and talking about myths and history, it was a step back in time. I've had several people just at the hospital say to me, you know, I, I, they talked about things that I had completely forgotten about, that I learned in school, but they also talked about things that they had never heard before, so they thought that it was a really wonderful event. So we appreciate CAPS and the directors who put that event on. It was, it was wonderful, and I think the kids really enjoyed the opportunity to present And I think that that's all I have for this evening. So...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm wondering if we should be at least giving the public notice of the change of time for our next meeting.
Oh, yes, thank you. That's a good reminder. At our last council meeting, we talked about some changes that we would like to implement to work on efficiency and work on respecting city staff schedules and the public schedules, and so we are going to move the time of the council meetings, just the time, not the days. We're still going to meet on the first and the third Mondays, but we're going to move from a seven o'clock start to a six o'clock start. So the first Monday, which is, I believe, the third of October...
Actually, the sixth.
Oh, okay, it's the sixth of October. We are going to be starting at six o'clock.
Six on the sixth.
Sixth on the sixth, good way to remember that. I should have checked that out before I said anything. So, okay. If there's nothing else, then we are going to adjourn the meeting for this evening. Thank you.